We live on Facebook and we live on Zoom.
All right. I'm going to call the regular, the January 4th regular meeting, the class school committee to order. We're going to first start with a roll call. I know that Mr. Carr is absent this meeting for other commitments. Mr. McCollum is going to be a few minutes late, but with that, we'll start with Mr. Kenny.
Present.
The same office.
Present.
Mr. Dial, present. That's three out of five. We do have a quorum to proceed. And so with that, I'll introduce a little bit of where we're going to go in the meeting. This is a little bit of a different format of the meeting because we just came off of a meeting that was right before the holiday break and we have some important work to do with the budget. So this meeting is by four and about budgets. It doesn't mean that we don't want to hear from you. We don't have a public comment section in this meeting. So I encourage you, if you have things to share with school committee, just reach out via email and we will certainly address that stuff in due course. But for right now, our plan is to focus on the financing of our fantastic institutions and how we're going to make sure we continue to provide excellent education to our kiddos. With that, Dr. Sullivan, I'll turn it over to you as superintendent of schools. Oh, pledge, yes. Sorry, thank you.
Okay. It's a new year.
Yes. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Now, I will enter my remarks that I just made as entered now at the appropriate time. And I'll turn it over to our superintendent of schools, Dr. Patrick Sullivan.
Super, thank you, Chairman Dial and anyone who's watching out there, happy new year. And I hope everyone here had a wonderful break and was able to spend some family time. And happy new year to all of you. Very excited for the new year and all the great things we're going to do in the class of public schools, a lot of which is encapsulated in this report. So our approach with this, because as folks know, there's the budget calendar has many steps in it, all leading towards approved, final approval by the school committee, which I believe is on March 15th, just following a public hearing on the budget. So before that, it's a series of workshops, iterations of our budget, so that we're making sure that we get all stakeholders, community input, obviously to the school committee, but any community input that people want to have via comment, that we're able to work with our town officials and also the teams that govern, the advisory of all of our budget requests, and then we're able to talk to our administration. So what we did last time, just to refresh everyone's memory, is we had sort of a combined workshop with the principals and we presented our budget, kind of the first run through of it, so to speak. We did not include the capital budget, although we did talk about the capital budget. I should say, we didn't include the capital budget presentation, although we did include the capital budget positions that we were advocating for within the, within the other presentation. We did take in some input and part of the input was to bolster the thoughts we have of the bit point data, so we could have a little more of a rich conversation involving the positions we're advocating for. And then also to present a little more formally the capital requests. Another suggestion was made by Mr. Carr that we look at our budgets through the lens of, well, what if things aren't, you know, going as well as we, we hope they do? What is it that we could potentially live without or work without in the schools? Because that's part of a healthy process in looking at resources and how you're applying to help the teaching and learning. We're in the process of that. Part of what's kind of handicapping us in that regard is that we didn't have a lot of time to do that as a leadership team because we had the meeting the Wednesday before break. We had a big break where a lot of the leadership didn't take vacation, which they needed. And then we came back and here's the second day back, but we will, we will be on that, that mission for sure. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to share the presentation and someone and I will bring you through it, knowing that you've seen a lot of this, particularly the beginning slides. And we'll stop and just talk a little bit more about the data that we put in that will help you sort of look under the hood and see why we're asking for these particular items a little bit more than we had. So it starts off obviously with our budget priorities. I won't, I won't belabor on this one, but for anyone seeing this for the first time, these are our strategic compass points on our strategic plan. And then the request to school budget. And you can see, Sue, you want to just talk quickly about the slide, just so they know?
Certainly. So the top is current budget, contractual salary obligations is the next item, which is all our negotiated contracts, moving everyone their steps and lanes and longevity increasing and of such. The second breaker, we had an additional funding. So we have additional $468,000, which helps offset a big portion of some of our requests. Specialty tuition went up by 46,000. It probably went up a lot more. However, we did move several children because they aged out. They graduated and left the district at 22. And then our projected retirement savings is 80,000. So our overall costs are pretty low, they're 82,000.
Good. And I know we went over that, but it's a good refresher for all of us as we get our holiday brains.
Holiday brains.
Back into work. And this is the overarching requests, which haven't shifted since our last. But you can see them there. We're going to get into them individually as we go through the presentation. And then we have a continuation of that, you can see. And then there's a couple of factors at play here. We talked about kindergarten and how that would affect us. So you can see there's two of a little back and forth here. Sue, maybe you can explain. You can see the second to last line there as well, section. Everyone says, continue to process, the process of reducing full day kindergarten tuition.
Yes. So that's chipping away at tuition and trying to reduce it, you know, a little bit each year. So it's $50,000, which you weren't able to do last year. With all that included, with the 50,000, we're at a 4.04% increase. And then part B of that slide would be if we absorb the full cost of kindergarten, which is $300,000, that puts us at a 5.16% increase, which really isn't a bad loss.
And just for, for reference, what do we, do you remember what we were last year at this point was over five, correct?
I think we were at 5.7.
Yeah.
And we got shipped back to 3.04.
But at this stage in the process, just to make the point, we're actually asking a little bit less than we had the year coming out of COVID, actually quite a bit less. So, and then in terms of full day kindergarten, we'll talk about that a little bit more, but we are really only one of a few districts in the area that do have a full day kindergarten fee. Most districts have a similar that to the budget, don't solve the budget. So the first need is, we mentioned the director of data curriculum evaluation. And I, just to once again underscore what this is, it's, we're requesting the hiring of a director of data curriculum and evaluation K to 12. This individual not only worked very closely with Dr. Collins, Mr. Wonka, our director of student services, well, principals, well, staff, I should say, but will also work with staff in looking at data, setting up data dialogues. We've done a lot of work in really formalizing what data we have to show student progress over the last year and a half. And this will be someone coming in, looking at that and actually working on the ground floor to create plans based on that data with the various stakeholders. So they could be leading data dialogues with a great little team, for example, and helping them set action plans, which will guide them right through. Really something that is hard for Dr. Collins to do because of the other many things that she's doing in the district. A lot of districts have two folks doing this from a, one from a humanities and one from a STEM perspective. And some, some folks also have a director of data additionally. We're, so I don't want people thinking that this is a fiscally irresponsible request because actually we're asking this person to do the tasks of what some districts have done by two or three individuals. So it just shows you that in, in some cases, when you really want to get down there and do the work, you need a few people. We think we can really make a huge dent in our action planning with this person, working closely with particularly Dr. Collins. And part of that is to really analyze those MCAS data points and to ensure the fidelity of curricular instructional practices are happening. So really strong look. And just to keep in mind that this isn't a new budgetary request because we did have a director of technology and digital learning, Lisa Radman, has left us now for another position, but it actually in some ways, I mean, we loved Lisa and the work she was doing, that position was going to change a bit anyway because of the trajectory of where we're going and how we've grown. When we did hire Lisa on to be our director of technology and digital learning, we were in a COVID situation where we had, we just shifted from full online virtual world and we really didn't have a sense of how that was going to evolve based on the needs that we had. So we used Acer funds to help fund that. And then we were able to pick it up in budget the following year. This is a sort of a redirectional of that need and that the next step is now that we have some of these structures in place is to really get into that and drive the action happening on the ground floor. Also, this person will be helping with evaluation of staff, which is really important. It's another area that, that we need, we need more people doing. And this one, this will be able to really help our principals in providing effective feedback for teachers to improve what they're doing in the classroom, so it should be productive for everybody. And just some data that we, we put in here, data you've seen before, but you know, there's no reason why Cohasset shouldn't be the, this is MCAS, which is an important data point. And there's no reason that Cohasset shouldn't be the highest performing district in the state, quite frankly. And to push forward with these, with these, you know, with that promise and make sure that we're supporting our teachers to help deliver that. And you can see that although we compete with some of our like districts, you know, I can't say that we're the top school, performing school, performing district on this list. And I feel we should be. So that's something that we're, we're going to push, push towards to get as much as we can out of it. I mean, this position will be just along way in that. So I don't know if you want to talk about that position now or if you want to move on?
I was going to ask you the same thing, July is part of floating. What was the question, the hour of questions?
I think actually in this particular presentation, because it's a one agenda item, it actually would be profitable to, after every one of these positions, to just see if you have any questions. And then when we move to the capital, we can do the same for the capital. So I don't know if anyone has any questions, but this is a position that we worked as a leadership team to, we discussed, first of all, what do we need? If we have an opportunity, not an opportunity we were actually looking for, but rather than have a discussion with Lisa Radman, who had the tools to do some of this, we're now looking at hiring someone to do the, the tasks that I just mentioned. So I don't know if you have any questions about the nature of the position or any questions about anything involved in the data or anything that I just presented. I'll just go back to the slides.
It's a small, small crew, so we'll be open forum.
So just in terms of pacing and timeline, as long as everything goes through, is this a position that you're hoping to hire end of this school year or would they have to start July 1st or?
This would be someone who we'd be hoping to start at the end of this year.
End of the year and ease them in.
Yeah. So typically their contract would start on July 1st.
Yep. Okay. That's what I was thinking, just like.
We'd hire them, we'd hire them to start.
Yeah. Yes. I just clarifying because obviously there's a lot of kind of inventory type stuff that has to be done before jumping into a school year, to make sure that that person is fully ready, they would need a whole summer of prep.
Yeah. I don't think we'd be able to hire, well, this is interesting because this is the only position on here that we would be able to hire immediately. We're concerned we might not get the quality of.
Agree with you. But could you, I mean, can you, could you post in like March when people are starting to look and make decisions about the next year?
Yes.
Yeah. I think the tricky part is we probably have to contract, right? We just have to see.
Yeah. I just think like if we're going to get the best candidate earlier that we can post or something like this, the better. And then the earlier they can get started up so that they are ready to, you know, hit the ground running with back to school.
This one, this is the, and that's a really good point. This is really the only position we could turn on and advertise tomorrow, but I didn't feel right doing that without the committee really having a feeling for it.
And you're right. I'm like, you want to wait till people are kind of making their decisions for the next school year. Someone who's available right now might not be someone we.
Yeah. March is that.
Yeah.
That's true. But, but still, I'm, I'm, my focus right now is just making sure that we have the right position or advertising for it. That's why I think that the input of the community and the committee is important. But I agree.
I also think this makes a lot of sense for our district, working in bigger districts and where you do see it for humanities and STEM and having that divide and substantially separate positions makes sense. But here, we just don't have the numbers to, to, to back that up. So I think it makes sense that it's one person having consistent conversations, consistent language throughout the, the schools. It would be a really important way to have that be more meaningful.
Having someone with a particular, particular skill to look at data and to help drive data and really knows teaching and how you can implement plans to, to really help effectuate change in that data support.
It's a really smart shift, just as times are changing.
I'm just glad when Lydia goes ahead of me some this year. Do that in the future. No, I'm good. Thank you for pointing that out. I agree with her. I think that the sooner you can get it out, the better.
For the record, Mr. McCollum has arrived and we're now at four out of five committees present. No worries, I'm not going to be comments. I'll, I'll jump in if you do not.
No, I shared my thoughts last time.
So a question, this is, are there analogous positions in other districts? And I ask that not because I think we should copy other districts, but rather when it's a unique position, it becomes harder to find a candidate. And so is there, is there a candidate pool that you would look to for this particular job? Because it does seem to straddle a few disciplines.
Yeah. It, it's a unique position in that it doesn't, like, there's a lot of positions out there to analyze data, but it doesn't empower that person to necessarily create a plan. It's like, you know, you're analyzing the data and then sort of hanging it off, create a plan. You might have some thoughts on it. And then there are positions where you're a director of STEM or a director of humanities, often, you know, sometimes those are in place of having an assistant superintendent, other times they're with an assistant superintendent, but they're not necessarily, then you have the issue of the, making sure that they're collaborating, coming together and that they're not competing for resources, that they're actually collaborating, working together. This is someone that can do kind of all of that. And I think Lydia's comments are really on the mark because we just don't have the numbers. I, I could see some, I could see someone looking and saying, well, geez, what you really could do is have like a STEM. I don't know. I don't know that we need that assistant superintendent, but I think having this, working with an assistant superintendent, this position really would effectuate some important change. So I'm not sure I answered your question exactly because your point is well taken that there, there's really like three positions here. There's a director of data and then there's the director of STEM and director of mathematics. This person plays a little bit of a role with that. But again, we have department chairs at the high school, do some work with curriculum.
We have reading and math specialists.
Reading and math specialist. This person's more helping to coordinate the whole soup, so to speak, and to, to make sure it's served well to the kids.
So I was thinking more on the, and that's all exactly as I understood it. The, I was thinking more about, you know, how would you find someone who had all of these skills? Like, would you look for someone who's currently in an assistant superintendent position at a bigger school? Would you look for, I guess, oh, you have an idea of what the candidate pool would, would be?
Probably a director, a current director.
Coordinator.
Yeah. So someone who maybe was a director K, pre-K to 12 for ELA, director who was pre-K to 12 for STEM and humanities, who was looking to get a little more involved with a role that has some of the tenants of assistant superintendent and someone who really loves data and loves to work with folks on data dialogues and those folks are out there. So I think there's a lot of people, there are not a lot, there are a tremendous amount of assistant jobs out there as much.
No, no.
So I think someone who might be looking for that, aspiring to that in the future, I think that would be a good person for this, but probably sitting as a current director. So that's it.
They're out there.
Yeah.
I've worked.
Well, you got, you got your referral right there. So, great. No, I, I, I think this is a, a great position. We've talked about it before and last time, you know, the world is different now with data. There's so much data to be able to parse through what's good, what's not, clear out noise, understand, Dr. Collins, we talked through the MCAS results and how you can, there's, there's some, there's noise to be found in that that may indicate one thing, but when you really look at it, indicates something else. So when, having someone who can parse through that and then action it by putting in the plan and then, and then reinforce that action through an evaluation process. I think is a, is a, is a, is a great role and given the size of our district, you're right, it's probably a role in a large district by three people, but having a coordinated person, I think is, is, is great. This is, this is the type of, type of development we're hoping to have.
Yeah. I feel like it's filling a gap that it's just like something missing. This is what I think will fill it. So, and then, Mr. McCollum, just, you know, I, I shared a little bit more of the data dive, just so making sure.
That would obviously be their job is to study this data.
Or they'll be driving the MCAS data, MCAS bus, so to speak.
Really looking at ways that we take all of our data.
It's electric.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, but they'll be doing it with a lot of other data.
Absolutely. There's more data, but really being able to take all of that data, drilling down on it, really being able to make it actionable.
So.
Yeah.
So our next position that we are advocating for is a addition of one pre-K teacher and one ESP and just the supporting data that I, I just wanted to make you aware. We made the statement that there's, there are wait lists and alternative placements are happening, but you see, you get a sense for how big our wait lists were over the last three years. They're pretty significant. So, you know, that, that would be, and that's just people who went on the waitlist, people applying and, and, you know, didn't even want to be waitlisted because they didn't think they could get in. So there's a, there's a real high demand to get in there. So any questions on that position?
So that would, so right now we, I'm sorry, you jump out?
Jump in.
We just jumping in here?
Yes.
So basically it's 21 children did not get accepted to the pre-K.
So that we didn't have room for them because we only have one. So we have, you know, an integrated preschool, which involves some students who are on, Dr. Collins, I'm stating any of this, but having any, we have students who are on individual education programs and then we have peers who are with them in the classroom. So it's a fabulous collaborative atmosphere for those early learners. And that the, the numbers are small, we try to keep them to about 18.
Yeah. 15 or so, yes, like 15.
Yeah.
15, 15 students.
There you go.
Yeah. And so.
So there it is. Yeah. 15, it's.
Right.
Seven, minimum of two staffs. So that means that i- if we don't have an extra, it's a very small program and we have three-year-old program and a four-year-old program because, so, so we, you know, and it's, and it's again, it's half day.
Right. It's a balanced ratio of students.
So what would want, what would want to teach you how, to break it down to?
We'll add another class.
We'd add another class.
Six on the way now?
We'd add a morning and an afternoon session.
So 30 students.
15 in the morning.
It would wipe out the.
It would wipe out the waitlist.
Yeah, good.
That's important.
I also want to mention we have space.
Well, that was my next question.
Yep. We have the space right across the hall.
And, and, you know, I, I, I would say this too. It's like, I, I don't think anybody would value the fact that how important that pre-K is. It's just a learning cognitive way to go on. You know, I, I gotta tell you, as much as I've always criticized buildings in the school, I gotta say it's, we are really good at pre-K, pre. I, I, I say that from my own experience with my kids and how important it was and seeing what they went through with all his good and that special, even like some of the room ups that we, that we have for students that are excelling a little bit more, that, that school's set up for that.
Mrs. Joyce is fabulous.
Yeah. So all the other folks who were. This is a really strong case for this group.
Any other thoughts? Nope. And then we just added the data here about this as well. You know, we, you, thank, thank you again for allowing us to add this person who we hired. And, but you can get a sense for what we're talking about here. This is the need. And you can see the current grade six has a little bit of a bubble in the needs of students and you can see how that translates into the percentage of the class. So we just wanted to go to see that data because we will be carrying that over to the next budget. If you have any questions on that. Next one, this is our, just a little bit more data regarding our request for custodians. And maybe someone you can talk about this.
Sure. So the request was for one final custodian, which was a result of, I put more detail, well, it was a comprehensive custodial staffing analysis which performed using the APPA Operational Guide to Educational Facilities back in 2018. And the study showed the following, and APPA is Association of Physical Plan Administrators. What you see here, it shows all's good, current FTEs and what the recommended are. They currently have three, so all's good is good. Daniel, same thing, we have 2.4, they not three. So Daniel's good in Cohesive High School. At the time we had five, we now have six and a half. So we really do need one more. The only thing that I did share here was they also recommended a floater. So when someone's out there, float among the buildings. I'm not asking for a floater. But currently, you know, the middle high school has six and a half. The additional custodian would help with the coverage of cleaning the middle, you know, high school based on square footage in the survey. And currently we only have one day custodian here from 6:30 to 11:00, which is sometimes for me is more of something because if this, if this two acts is in two ends of the building, what gets taken care of for us with this one person? Or if, you know, if there's a, in a last minute snow coming in, there's only one person here until the rest can get here. So definitely makes sense to have one more.
So as I understand this and from our conversations, we're still low, even if, if we get this position, we're still understaffed at the elementaries?
No, elementaries are fine.
They're fine?
They've been brought up to the 3.0 in both schools.
Oh, they have?
When I went through COVID and hired some of those COVID cleaners, we kept them, we kept them on. So the elementary schools are fine.
Well, I was just getting the chart, let through me.
The current FTEs don't line up with 3.0. 2.6, 2.4.
Right. And then it says recommended. So this is, this is the study.
But did, but do we, I, I.
Right now.
If I can't remember, do we currently have three?
Yes, we currently have three.
So this was from 2018.
This was from 2018.
Gotcha, okay.
So currently Joseph and Haskett has three.
Okay. Good? Okay. So we are, so we are in that position.
Yes.
All right. Any questions on this? So this, this would bring us, and I know this was, Mr. Kearney had a lot of passion about governance, which I appreciate it. This will finally, Mr. Kearney, bring us up to the request required or the suggested or whatever you want to say about custodians.
I just want to say that. And I, and I think it just shows that we are making progress, staying extra clean. You see, we, you know, see a game here, bleachers. It's just that extra training, you know, give the custodian. Give the custodians time to, Sue, you made a great point about like, you know, sick days, especially with COVID. You know, I mean, you can't just not do the room, like it showed up. So I appreciate this.
Any other thoughts? So this, this didn't change because really we're not responding to data as much as we are responding to the needs that were articulated by these security firm who worked with AI three during our journey. And, you know, they're requesting that we have four staff members assigned to safety, security, one in each building. And this is really additional funding for a particular person who's in, you know, on staff to do more.
Right.
Fun of your questions.
We'll move on. And the same thing with the, the human resources payroll manager. The idea is to just increase this person's responsibilities, to provide more funding for them, to do more of an onboarding and human resources role within our team. And we feel that we can, with that, and also working with the town, we can, we can really fulfill our human resources needs more in a more articulated way.
It wouldn't take, it wouldn't take away from the town. It would actually probably assist them.
Any questions on that?
Well, yeah, I, I also think that the human resources, the way it is, it's not a big ask. It's like a $10,000 a year ask.
Yep.
And the idea that, I think it's so important to be able to pre-screen the people that you hire. You know, we think that having, you know, the, the ability to have somebody that has some kind of HR experience. And Sue was saying earlier, like the last meeting, when someone gets hired, it's very important that you give them a training process. Because you always hear like, I wasn't trained or I don't know. You know, those are the things that we don't hear is I don't know something.
That's right.
We want to have them have the resources to get that information, especially when it comes to their own personal, what, you know, what are the time off? Can I take a temp? All these things that basically tie up your time.
Well, and there are positions you look at and you say, we have the talent here to do this. And it's just a matter of making sure that person is, is handling that appropriately. Okay, move on. Now we're into the full day kindergarten. I think this is the same data, Sue, correct? Hasn't changed. There are very few. Again, I, I think it's under, under thirteen for sure districts who are past people paying for full day kindergarten at this point. So the choices are really 300,000 versus
Fifty.
Fifty. I don't want to discuss that at this point.
So I think that's the open question is for me. I mean, obviously, we, we should give free full day kindergarten. Like that's, I, I think that is self-evident. Welcome, I guess debate on that. But I think that's obviously a service we should provide to the community and it helps bring kids in. The question is obviously the resources and then, I know we have the intention for this chapter seventy. So that, that's something that I want to hear more about because that can have be, that could be a significant offset to that expense.
And we are expecting an answer on that very shortly because of the holidays, we can get it.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, I, I'm gonna meet with Tom Calvert next week to, to go along with what a portion chapter seventy is.
Chapter seventy is really, can be, some of it can be taken by the town. Different places do this.
Right. It's different formulas on, based on your district, right?
Yeah. Okay. So then Ozgood, and just to cut to the chase, you know, we got the priorities here. I won't talk about that. But just remember that what we're asking for at Ozgood and Dr. Stone, we'll reach out and make sure these slides is to increase the number of math support with an additional point five oh. This will work with full-time, with the full-time math specialist to support pullout and in-class interventions of really numeracy. And it will increase the number of students, student meetings, students meeting and exceeding expectations of MCAST. And that's going to be, you know, this is some of the data that we just talked about. And here's some of the
Dr. Stone, just if I remember correctly, was this posted on the website?
No.
From last week?
No.
Okay. Wondering if we could do that. That way we can, people can look at it at home.
I can't. I'm just leery to post things that we haven't
Yep.
totally vetted yet because then they look at like a draft.
Yeah.
Put it as a draft if you want.
I mean, and maybe just, you know, one of these, yeah, request, we can maybe talk about it, but
Yeah, yeah, I'll do that. We definitely will. Whenever we decide on something, I post it. So it's just a matter of making sure that folks know this is just a draft that, because I want to make sure the committee is agreeing with it. But you can see, this is just an example of where we're just not in mathematics. This is just grade three math. And again, this, we're showing this statistic because you have the kids that are moving into grade three. Want to support them as much as we can. Our kids didn't do as well as we wanted. That, that
And we just want to really, we're partially meets, you know, you have fifty-one percent of the kids meeting expectations, but that's thirty-five percent. We'd like to, you know, reduce that number and obviously reduce our number of students.
These numbers are too close to the state averages for something for, like classes. That's just the data. At Deer Hill?
Oh, go ahead.
No, no, it's similar position at Deer Hill. Want me to do Deer Hill?
No, you're good. Okay, I jumped the gun.
So the, the school priorities again, just regarding one of those, but the budget requests, our point five elementary specialist and then a grade three teacher. And we'll talk more about the data behind that. But you can see that at Deer Hill, this actually sets up kind of a triangle. We have an ESP that does some work and then we have our math specialist slash coach that does work with our staff. And then this particular person who worked with that to create that sort of triangle support.
Right. Because I think, you know, the ESP does a great job, but I think having a teacher who just has a stronger knowledge base can allow some more flexibility when you're in the moment teaching and the ESP can do some more of those, some of those interventions that are very structured.
Yep. And then we'll, we'll get into that in a second. But you can see the grade three teacher were really concerned with those students who began school in, in the COVID environment of the pandemic where they were virtual or halfway virtual, learning, reading with teachers with masks, skills our teachers are. There's a lot, lots to do with the way that moves and everything. We just want to pay attention to those kids. So you'll see, here, here's just some of the grade five math data. And you can see, it's, it's not where we want to be. It's, it's very close to the state in some ways. And way too high and partially meeting expectations. No question about it. And then class size enrollment. This is what the enrollment would be projected out. You can see in the last column, seventeen point eight is low. Uh, that's, that's good. That's, that's a very nice number. But we're trying to mirror what the students received in second grade. Second grade, currently we have six sections, which keeps our numbers about the same. And we'd like to mirror that in third.
When they go into third.
Third grade, because right now there are five sections. So this would be increasing that third grade to have six sections, which would keep the numbers low. So we're hoping that, remember, that was, we haven't seen how those students in grade two have done on the MCAST yet. We gave them a lot more attention. So we're hoping that a two-year focus of catches them up. And the, sometimes the best thing to do is just to be able to work with less kids. You know, with one of the best.
Right. That's always, that's always.
Yeah, it's always, it's always important. So that, so that's Deer Hill. And then you can see, this is just some of the statewide data. You can see it at MCAST. How, you know, it, it's, it's absolutely changed. You want to explain this?
Yeah, sure. So this is a statewide. This is some of the data I used in another presentation, but you can see that there has been an increase. So, so that's good. The math meeting and exceeding expectations percentage has gone up. So there's been a little bit of recovery, but we want to see more recovery because that's, that's statewide sounds.
Yeah.
We certainly want to see that number higher across.
And this doesn't include pre-COVID percentages. So we're, we're showing a slight increase across the state. That's what we're seeing too.
Yep, in our mathematics. Yep. So, and then the next slide shows us, you know, shows what we've done. But again, it's a repeat from before, but you can see when you're looking at three through eight for meeting and exceeding from 2019, there's been a recovery. But if you look at Cohasset, we had a nice, a nice healthy recovery. Fourteen percentage points lost. And then at Deer Hill, it's been that seventy percent. So that's really nice. I attribute that to bridges going in and really working with us and allowing, allowing us to target what we needed to target. So, so I'm happy with that. But I think really being able to work with these students to get that really strong recovery for kids, I think is so important. And then we have DLA scores next, which across the state, there was a decline. We talked about that already. Definitely challenging state here. We were, across the state, with a five percent decrease from last year. And then we fall, we were there. So you can see the Massachusetts three through eight scores. And then if you look at the Cohasset three through eight, we went out and continued that trajectory that they, at Deer Hill also. So that's the importance of really being able to target those kids that are coming in. You know, we, we just don't know. So we want to make sure that we have that smaller class size that will help teachers really get in there and
So we don't think we can afford not to give those, give that third grade low numbers. Okay. Any questions on that? Now would be a good time for me to go.
Was there a, a point five math specialist for Deer Hill?
Yes.
Talk about that as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because we're seeing on the first slide.
Yeah, that was the fifth grade math data. It was just showing that we're still having problems in that.
Just to sum, so far we've got a new, a new, add, add for grade three teacher. We discussed a math specialist for Ozgood, preschool teacher, preschool ESP, and a point five math specialist for Deer Hill. And I imagine it's fairly convenient that the Ozgood and Deer Hill math specialists could be the same person. And that way they're a single person.
Could be.
Could be.
Yeah, it could be. I think in an ideal world, we'd want them to be
Yeah, you want two point five.
From a learning perspective.
Right. That's a possibility.
Yeah, it has to do with the hours.
Sheldon and Dave.
Yeah.
So. Any other questions on those? Okay. And I think part of this again is just to make sure that we're providing the data that's compelling. I think that's it. And if we, this committee's done, I think, a really nice job of making sure that we're really specific when we don't present data that is compelling. So I just want to make sure that we feel that we're presenting the compelling data because we'll go back and find it or articulate it if we're not. So this is the addition of, and this didn't change because I thought, Mr. Mills actually did articulate pretty well what he was thinking here. Remember, we did provide your, you provided us with a math specialist last year at the middle school. We didn't have a math specialist in the middle school. That position has been very effective this year. And we're looking to, you know, some results from that. We're already seeing in terms of the way that kids are focused on mathematics.
Absolutely.
And this position is again, the refinement of the multi-smooth tier system of support that they're going to provide high-quality universal classroom instruction to support for all students. And this is adding a one point out teaching position. Some of the data you can see. And now if you want to talk about this a little bit, our schools, this deals with our, our student growth percentages.
Yep. And so what we really, if you look at, but you can kind of see the graph, but, but if you can see that the math scores, when you look at their growth between fifth and eighth, the lowest in sixth grade, see how, if you can see there, it does go up. Then our growth drops a little bit again. So we want to just make sure that our kids constantly have that positive growth. And we don't, we, we want the line to keep moving up, not to kind of be up and down. So I think that's really important. And this, the next slide, I think, talks about at the class size in math. And if you remember, he talked about how he had that position this year in English and how he was able to reduce the class size. And again, these students coming in were all in that pandemic. And so, right, so we need to make sure that we can keep our class sizes as small as possible so we can even as much individualized and small group instruction as possible so that we can target where those students are.
Try, remember all those students who struggled in fifth grade from that measure of MCAST.
Are in sixth grade.
Sixth grade.
And, and they are currently there too. So by being able to divide that up.
And this is sort of an example. Smaller grade six math classes will allow for more differentiation in personal instruction and enhanced student learning within the tier one universal level. The addition of this position will also provide opportunities for creative and flexible approaches to curricular and tiered support. And, you know, that certainly is, is called for strategic planning.
That core instruction, that tier one instruction is the most important. Obviously, our chip instruction is important, but we want to make sure that our core instruction is as strong as possible. That's where most instructions are delivered. And that's how you keep kids moving in a positive direction.
Okay, questions on that? For the high school, it's, it's actually a similar ask. And we, and we have similar data that supports it. But, you know, really, it's, it's this position, it's add a one point O math teacher. It, and it is, enables us to be instituted integrated in that.
Yeah. So integrated math is really that bridge between algebra and geometry and trigonometry, kind of making sure that students get an overall review of the mathematics so that they are prepared to move on to the next, the next levels of mathematics. And so I think that's really important for kids, what they had it for, they had it for a couple of years and then they took it out. And now they think putting it back in would be a good idea, especially because our ninth and 10th graders are on semesters. And so I think it's important. We have their, they'll do algebra one in one semester, algebra two next semester, geometry's in the middle there. But they do it in semester, not as a full year. So I think being able to have that integrated math for a, for a semester can be helpful to, to those students who need it. And then really creating an elective for ninth and 10th graders who need that extra dose of math to shore up any skills that they missed while they were in middle school and early high school. And certainly, of course, during the pandemic. And then could reduce the class sizes for some of the other core classes. And then look at the elected, look at what electives are being offered and maybe add that on because there has been talk about that, maybe an accounting course. Because there's been a little more of a business. And then also looking at computer science. And could we offer, you know, what could we offer for that? So there's some flexibility in here that allows us to support students in mathematics who need some extra support, but also to add some other offerings for other students.
Any thoughts on that position?
Smart addition.
Full support of that. I just did, I also need to say that we did get a ELL specialist a couple of years ago.
Correct. And you, you mean, uh,
Reading.
At the high school?
Yeah.
We did not.
We have a middle school.
Middle school.
And a middle school.
So we were more stretched to get the math specialists.
Well, we were. We had some talk about what a literacy specialist would do at the high school and how it would function. And we couldn't really land on, it's, it's a rare position to see at high schools.
Yeah.
It doesn't usually to middle school.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, people have writing labs and things like that. But in general, if you're still really struggling in reading, there's some real reasons why that's happening.
Well, that makes sense.
Yeah. And so you probably have an I P. Probably, yeah. And or five or four because of
Yeah.
some, so some of those pieces. So it is kind of, it's, it's a harder.
Yeah.
The needs there. I think what we're, what we're trying to do though, correct me if you The needs there, I think what we're trying to do though, correct me if you feel I'm not stating this properly, is to look at, this is something that that person coming in can really drive. Everybody plays a role in writing, teaching writing. We're all teachers of writing. We're all teachers of literacy.
We are.
Reading. We need to articulate what our roles are going to be.
Exactly.
Beef up that overarching approach at a tier-one level.
Right.
Across the school.
Exactly, yeah. And we've talked, I've talked to the department chairs about it. And everyone understands just how important it is. If you're in social studies, you're still teaching students how to read, how to find important material and ideas. How are you writing and showing your thinking? And that's across all content areas. So that will be a push for us. Conversations have been happening, and people know that's what has to happen. It's not just an ELA MCAS assessment. It is really all content areas in K through twelve. So so we'll continue that work and really be working.
Yeah, this is, this is a very big app. This is something we've been asking. Something that we really need. Because to your point, you know, English is being taught, but math is, is again, that's something that is being taught in the classroom, but it's also being used in business. You mentioned accounting. You know, when you go into real estate, you've got to figure out how many square footages and what building. There's so many aspects to math and confidence levels. If you don't know your math, you can kind of get away with reading and writing. You know, you can kind of, with math specifically, like this is the answer.
It's scat, it's scattles.
And we want really strong, competent learners, whether it's math or reading.
Any other thoughts on this one? And then again, this is our MCAS data for grade ten mathematics, just too close to the state.
It's really just, really increasing those exceeding expectations and meeting expectations, obviously.
Yeah, we have a nice number of meeting expectations, and this is the end.
We do, and I mean, this was, yeah, we're still coming out of pandemic. But I think that we can have really stronger numbers and exceed expectations.
That thirteen should be much higher.
Yeah, and are not meeting, are personally meeting.
But the overall percentage of meeting and exceeding isn't too low.
No.
But it's the proportion of, we should have way more exceeding. And that's, that's.
We should be at the top.
Yep. And these are some of the data supporting that. And you can see supports the continuity of algebraic math instruction through ninth grade. Let's continue math to support the development of algebraic skills entering tenth grade. And continues to expand our computer science department. And this is another. Next is a one-point-oh library ESP. And this would be working in this building. And it's, as I looked at the actual class, the library media specialist pointed out accurately that a lot of districts from middle and high school have a separate librarian in the middle, a separate librarian. She's one for both. And that they often have ESPs working with them. She did some, I can get the data for you, but I didn't print it in this presentation. But she looked at schools with light sizes and actually looked at situations in our neighborhood. As a model where they have a librarian. We could, we could stand that. And really, that it's about the staffing level bringing us in line with other schools.
On this one, are there things that we are unable to do because of lack of library? And I saw the examples on the last slide, but just to, just to bring it to life for people like us. In a world where we have the library ESP, what additional things do our students get?
Yeah, actually, I can.
Yeah, I'd say part of it is, is that there's a lot of tasks that have to happen all the time. You know, checking kids in and out, reading through books, kind of all of those, those, the day-to-day tasks that keep things running. Our librarian also teaches and does a bunch of other work with students around research and all of that. So it allows her to be able to focus on more of that and have that stronger programming. And then the other person can take care of the day-to-day stuff that, you know, right now we have, they have volunteers coming in and doing it. This person is here all the time, understands how everything works. And so this never has to shut down because a volunteer didn't show up or whatever happened.
So I think it also really lends, if we add the library ESP and librarian's available to do her job, like as a library scientist, then I think that really supports the content area teachers in their instruction and their delivery of reading and writing instruction because that person's almost co-teaching lessons and talking about research and vetting resources and talking about how to cite sources. And that's, they're, they're literally teaching that with the teacher. And, and kids can still be checking out books because someone else is here to do that. So it's also like, even just keeping the material up to date is like an ongoing, constant rotation. So when it works, it works really well and supports all those areas that you guys were talking about with the content areas.
Some of the, some of the issues, the teaching versus the operational issues that happen in the library. Remember that this person would be helping with providing supervision of library while librarian or librarian media specialist is teaching. This person would also be creating engaging book displays, helping students find books, helping students with a printer, organizing shelves, coordinating with PSO library parent volunteers, all because the librarian is hoping to do more regarding significant reading of the print reference collection due to the abundance of highly credible database options. Hoping to purchase additional, to weed out nonfiction sections, creating numerous engaging displays, continue to evolve the eighth-grade classic here sustainability project, and also implementing the statewide required civics project at the high school level. So the, the pressures on her to do all of that is compounded with having to do a lot of the operational tasks that facilitate a middle and a high school, not just a high school. Nothing would just be asking for a high school. We're trying to, trying to fill. Any other questions on that one? Okay. So the, the last one here, and then we get to the capital, is the point-five athletic trainer. And I know you saw all this, but essentially, M A rule requires the athletic trainer. And we have an athletic trainer at all football contests. And that just leaves us really vulnerable. So this would facilitate, in a nutshell, the other sports while we have a trainer providing them. And it's just a student faculty ratio.
So we already have a point-five athletic trainer.
We do.
And we're looking to add another point-five, okay.
I talked about the future vegetables. So then we jump into the capital request, so let's lead this.
Sure.
Before we, before we do that, just to sum up, so that, that presentation talks about the adds, the staff and other requests. And adding that all together with the rollover, contractual salary obligations and making these instead. Get all that, it's kind of like the end of the infomercial. For all that, it's a five percent increase, including if you are now throwing a free kindergarten.
Yeah, five point two percent.
Five point two percent.
That's free, that's free kindergarten.
So that's, that's, so that's our, that's the, that's the budget proposal that we have.
Okay. That's great, so now on to capital.
Capital.
Do you want to have a process?
Yeah, I'll talk about the process. So the school capital process, it happens every year. We can talk, you know, we can talk facilities condition for each building every year. We update our capital needs, rest, recording items that have to address. We add new items. We review our priorities with district leadership and school committee, finding facilities subcommittee. We identify proposed funding source of timing of each item. We present those to school committee and require assistance to town slash capital, which we, sometimes we do a walkthrough. We do not do a walkthrough, we have it scheduled. Consensus was.
It's, you know.
They had seen everything that was on our current list, so they did need to have a seat again. Osgood vegetable was, remember what they want to see, and then when they run the whole entire. And they did award sponsors to do the vegetable based on special timing.
And you'll see, you'll note that there's some item, there's an item not on this. It's a large item. It's the air handlers on gymnasium roof, which were already encumbered for us. So that is completely in the works and something that, you know, it just needs to proceed. We already have the money for it. So that's not.
Three years ago.
Correct. So what do we get, where is that? I'd say two.
So when I was bid last year, bids came in almost a million dollars over what our request is for. So obviously, we had to reject all the bids. We didn't have, we had five hundred or seven fifty. Right now, the bid is back with the facilities department because he's, Nick is tweaking specifications to try and get it down to the price that it needs to be at. And he thinks because we had such minimal participation in the bid, that our current contractor, who wouldn't normally do the bid, was able to bid on it. And he believes that that person, if we went out to bid again, would make it within the realm of what we have allotted. Yeah.
So my, my understanding is you don't have to put that again on our capital items.
We've already been given.
Unless, unless, I guess, maybe your question.
Unless it's an increase.
Like, is there?
Unless it's.
So, so we won't know that until the bids come back.
I can just, someone was passed out last year. It's just so bad. The leaking is also an issue. Yeah, we, we did patch it a bit, I believe, but it was leaking in a different area. So there's, just, just FYI, we had, the reason why I bring this up is because we have up to a summer league basketball. It's wrecked, and we had to go over to the high school and play there during the summer. It was so hot, it was just ridiculous.
And that's for me, that's the year, but the, yeah, correct.
And that's the main purpose. Done by the summer, that, that's, I would just ask that that would be a priority. So.
Yeah, that's got to be a priority.
And this is our prioritized list?
So this is our prioritized list. There's been a couple of small tweaks to it.
I can go, we can go through it, you don't have to do the whole.
Okay.
This was what we approved last week.
This is, yeah, we can come back to it, but we'll go one by one in order of our.
And I do believe that there is one, one page on it.
Oh. Well, with the fitness centers.
The fitness center is on here, but initially, we had a hundred thousand dollars for a athletic minivan. And that number dropped down to thirty-one, about thirty-one thousand for two fifteen-pass per transit vans. All teams can be transported with the two vans except for the football. So that's definitely a plus for that.
That's in the show, right? So we can, we'll get to that, we can talk about it. So first item is the.
The first item is a bus lease, obviously. Our buses are expiring, the lease is expiring June thirtieth. Year or two ago, we talked about outsourcing, just because we have such difficulty finding drivers, difficult to find places to park. When we reached out to the surrounding contractors that provide bus transportation, they're in the same boat that we're in, shortage of drivers. So none of them were willing to even attempt to take on another district. So we decided we were going to renew our lease. And we've tried for two years now to hire new bus drivers. Good news, we had one test this morning and passed. So bus five, who's been doubling up the last few days because of illness, is now going to have a designated driver. We have the second person testing on Friday. So finish cross, the second person passed. And then we have two new people going into training. So hopefully.
We have a pipeline.
We're trying to, we're trying to build, I'd rather have more than less. Because we can always have them do field trips at athletics.
I can speak for the community, I think the community would rather us have more than less. We need to build a resilient.
Yes.
Transportation infrastructure here, so it's.
We realize and apologize for what we showed.
So, I mean, it's, nobody wants that, but I mean, these are, these are the hands we dealt. We have, you know, we have, we have people, human beings, and human beings get sick, and we have to respond to it. I think that schools have done a commendable job responding to that in that very complicated situations in a very effective way. But, you know, I guess I would say that along with the lease, we're talking about it, but we're paying attention to it by getting the staffing and, you know, building more resilient.
Correct.
This is a, this is an excellent ask.
We know that it's, you know, it's unacceptable, but we, like, for example, yesterday, last minute change, yesterday or today.
Today.
Joe this morning was fine, at lunchtime was not fine with extreme ill, obviously can't drive in the afternoon. So it's grand, but it's double.
But we do need to study this and make sure that when we get full strength, that this doesn't happen. You know, it's just something that we're, we're grasping at straws to try to get the drivers. And it was very fragile in terms of if someone gets ill, what happens. So we do need to, I appreciate what you're saying, but we do need to improve this.
Now, I know this is not an ask for bus driving staff on the budget request. So we have, we have slots, we have headcount for bus drivers. It's just filling it is the issue. So.
And I had, you know, I mentioned to Dr. Sullivan earlier, I had reached out to my, my listener, a business manager, to say, you know, are we the only one? I know we're not. And I had one district say, we're experiencing the same thing. Some days we have a full complement of drivers, most days we do not. We have, we have to double up our routes, causing delays and drop-off times and a lot of scrambling to make sure kids are getting on the correct bus. Parents are extremely angry and upset. Let's know the district nearby going through the same thing. And my guess is, I probably will hear from more with the same answers.
And this, this bus lease, this particular bus lease, is that going to be new buses? It's not going to be the same because bus three breaks all the time.
All those buses are going back and we're getting.
I won't, it's bus three.
Getting all.
And we have an electric bus.
And we're getting our electric bus.
Yeah, are we getting, speaking of buses, are we going to be able to, like, all through local, the options and stuff, seven, three sixty cameras? Seat belts, like, I'd like for us to be able to really talk about the school buses when we do. Is there alternatives?
So I might, I might pose, that might be a facility subsidy.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's one of the questions I want to look at. It says, has the three sixties, because the ones that we have now do not totally have the three sixties, they have the one eighty. So just so everybody knows, the driveway can, the three sixty can see all around the bus. So that's, that would be something to, to, I, because I bring this up because I spent time before trying to advocate for these things. We got them three years ago, so. And I wasn't able to fill that, which I thought was important. I mean, it's okay, I mean, it is, but going forward, I think we should look at all the options that are open.
No, that's good. Sure. So, when, when does the lease expire, the current?
June.
June. So. See, I'm, I'm concerned that that our ability to effectively mitigate the challenges that we're confronting right now may not improve under this, under our current transportation law. So is it, is it, is it an opportunity in time? I understand that, you know, last, it was, it was in spring that we were evaluating restoring the outsourcing of transportation needs. That one, we were doing it, and we couldn't find anyone to take us on.
No, and it's the same.
The same now, and changed. So, so we don't have a choice, we don't have an option.
We don't have an option. I mean, we could go out to bid and we're not going to have any response.
Okay, and you're confident about that? I, I just, because, I mean, then, then, then there's no choice.
We have called, we've called local motion for student, J. Carlyle, all the ones in the area. And they're saying, they're saying the same thing, we cannot take on another, another district because we're at times not filling our own buses with what we have.
And which, I was with, I was on the subcommittee when we were doing this evaluation. One of the learnings that we had through the pandemic was the advantage of having some extra. extra layer of control over your bus fleet. So that was something that we did not previously consider as an advantage that we realized that.
No, I agree, but I, I, you know, I mean, I guess it doesn't matter. If it's not an option, it's not an option. Some moot point, but I just the sacrifice of, of, of control may be desirable to that of constant emails coming out two hours before the kid you're dismissed, saying that you have to be a bust out twenty minutes before you.
Drivers, it's the.
Right, but if we outsource, it all comes in one, right? So at least if you lease buses for another four years, we're locked into that for years. And we can't just outsource, but you know, we have a lease. And so at least if we have our drivers, we, we outsource, the whole thing is outsourced. It's not like we're going to get our, so it's, it's, they're hand in hand. So it's like.
And there are some advantages to that for sure. I, I think the, the issue is that a lot of the companies have they're already indebted to other districts and they know they have the amount of drivers who can fulfill that. They're not willing to go further than that. And so I, you know, I defer to Sue on like, i- if that's changed, my answer that I got is no, it really hasn't. So that's, that's, that's a problem for us for sure. You know, when we went to the two tier format from the three tier format, we had to hire two additional drivers just to keep the current staffing level going. Turns out that we were actually outfitted just to make it with the, with, with the three tier model. And with two tier, we needed additional buses and drivers. We, we just, with the driver shortage that, that we hit that, we hit, we hit the ceiling. And that's what we're feeling right now.
So it's, it's not an equipment issue. It's, it's a driver.
Driver.
I wasn't suggesting.
No, I, I, I agree with you from.
It's gonna be a point that I, I, I would say this, I would say to Craig's point, like, what's, what would the cost be to have an outside source do that? And are we in line with them? Because honestly, like, if they come back and they say, it's gonna be X amount of dollars and we're doing it for this, then maybe we should look at maybe increasing our budget to where it should be. In other words, like, if I give you a price of sixty thousand to, to do it, whatever, six hundred thousand, whatever it is, and I'm able to do it for them, and then we're doing it for a lot less, then shouldn't we be compensated to be able to? You, you know what I'm saying? Like, what, what does it cost to do the job, right? It's like painting a house. Like, what's it cost? We don't know what that cost is because we haven't even got a price, right?
No one would give us.
So but, but my point is, is that if they came in and said, okay, this room's two grand to pay, and we're only, we're, and that's what a company would charge, but we're only getting a thousand to pay. Then maybe we should look at, like, going back to capital and saying, this is something we need more of. We need somebody that's gonna, you know, take care of these priorities to, to be able to maybe fund more drivers, because it's like, maybe we have to pay our drivers. But if we're, if, in other words, if they're saying that it's, this is what it would cost to fund a program for our buses, is our bus now with what we're paying in payroll in line with them?
I hear that. I would, I wish I could say that, you know, I'd, I'd advocate for increased drivers' pay, and that would help the issue. We did raise our drivers' pay. It's very competitive.
It's competitive. It's more than.
Senator.
Hang on.
Hang on.
And we might find that if we were to outsource it, that we wouldn't get as such quality drivers because that company's gonna cut track. They didn't make money, right?
Our drivers are great. And it's just, it's just, we don't have enough of them.
Right.
And, and I have to just put a plug in for the, we did have a very tough situation on the day before the holiday where we had a flood with the, the water did not receive. They did a very nice job of handling that on the fly. So they're, they're very, your, your children are in very good hands. It's just a matter of not having enough of them.
And what I'm, we're, we're trying to build that, and that's why we, we put advertising on stock and we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep running until we have several more lightening sites.
So I do, I do want to try and keep us on, on the budget topic, though. And maybe this is, this is something that we can put as a separate topic for later meetings. I'm worried that people who would want to hear this, need to hear this, didn't necessarily try and make this meeting. So so, but anyways, so budget item one, bus lease. We need buses.
We need a place to put them.
And we need a place to put them.
We need a place to put them. So here is the latest and greatest design from the engineers, must pack a lot. You can see there's.
Steerhill.
It's a downhill in the front. There's space for our buses and then there's the three mini buses off to the right. And then I believe there's ten spots, parking spots for staff.
See, the school's over here, obviously. And that's the driveway coming in.
And I, I spoke to them again today and said, okay, what if I have ten buses? I need to be able to fit ten buses there.
And what they said.
Um, we're gonna redesign that.
Cut down those trees they put.
Right.
Right. They're gonna redesign that plan for me.
That's, that's.
Because I thought, well, I mean, well, one, we only have the eight buses, but then we have number nine, the, the electric. It'd be great to have the electric with the rest of the buses.
Yep.
And then if, you know, if I can get enough drivers and we can add another bus, that's another way to leave even more problems.
I think, I think people appreciate that. And I would, we might should think about what a ten thousand would look like because we, we have long bus routes and.
And some very large groups of kids coming in.
Yeah. I know.
Little kids up there.
Yeah, I know. I know. And our bus three is at capacity, I think, ninety, so, so much students on, so. So, yeah, definitely plan for the future. We don't want to build a parking lot and then have to.
And we'd also like to be able to put a small modular facility there too, that our bus drivers could use, who would have those locker areas and a.
Right. And there was I'm not sure who this plan, there is a plan that has potential spot for a building.
Yeah.
To connect with water and sewer.
I mean, we can do it in phases, but we really would.
So that's, that's in the sprint somewhere I.
We also want to point out that this two hundred thousand dollar ask is that we pay for the four years of what we're paying now. So that's important to know that that's a cost savings to the town.
Currently paying a private business.
Yeah, so that's a, that's a big savings, just FYI. So and, and I, and I want to give the town some credit as well. Putting, coming up on this plan. It's, it's pretty impressive if we can do it because it's something that we do. It's been worked on for a while.
We, we, we got help. I mean, Glenn Pratt has been phenomenal. And he's been running with this.
Make it happen. All right. So that's that. Any questions on that? And then this is.
This is just a replacement of our phone books that we have a current lease. It's five hundred and forty phone books and it's still the lease amount is fifty two thousand per year. At the middle school, Lisa Radden had gone through and done lots and lots of research within the schools of what we had for slot panels and projectors. And has phased in a program where the middle school has the greatest need, twenty classrooms and it's a combination of well mounts and carts depending on classroom.
One behind you is, is one that is, that's a model.
That's. Using classes.
Yep.
So.
It looks like, just like the picture for one at home.
Yes.
So five thousand, middle school would get all the classrooms.
Smart, smart panels.
Um, next year would be the high school, or the following year would be the high school, the following year is element, one of the elementarys, and then following year is the last school. So we'd kind of phase it in and not raise that amount of money, you know, too quickly.
They have the same functionality as the pollies?
Sorry?
They have the same functionality as the pollies? Is this thing that we're?
They won't have pollies on them. They'll just have the boards. But we are looking at some other devices that would allow for that same kind of audio.
It's called a cowls. They're smaller and they go.
They have one at most, huh?
Yeah. Exactly.
Yeah.
Great for a classroom.
Yeah. So.
Not necessarily.
Trying to think of ways to get, right, third parties inside the classroom.
Yeah. So that'd be that house.
Yeah.
It's also being integrated. Beware of mounting height. I've just seen a lot of weird mounting happen as we integrate them into our school. And then you're like, oh, well, because of wiring, we had to put it up higher, but they're for five year olds. So like, the child can't using the board. So just as you are integrated.
Good to know.
Oh, mounting the boards.
Correct.
That was, that was the study.
It's like, why are we having this? The kids can't interact with it. I know that's not budget, but just like, what a waste of money.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. This is, you can see the age of the projectors. All ten years old. They get in there.
It's a whole technology.
To your point, we already have some of these suboptimal positioning. So what will be ceiling mounted?
Right.
But it's the same deal. Well, mountain projectors are the wrong place. Just letting you read this.
Yep, this is great.
That's, that's actually the, that version is behind you in, in action.
Okay.
Next, Alexis Deahill and Osgood iPads. So again, their iPads are outdated, probably close to ten years old. How much is in an adult, but close, very outdated. Again, Lisa Radden had gone through curriculum analysis of it. So for two hundred and fifty two iPads, cases and charging stations, we'd be replacing all the iPads at the two hundred schools.
And they're heavy, heavily.
And a lot of our adaptive apps, like Lexia and the bridges, when I can't remember the name of it, are much better when used on an iPad than on a mobile. So it's nice to have this.
This one's not new. This is retiring at Dale. So Dale has had several of its hallways, piecemeal and yet phasing it in, replaced. But she'd like to, Britwell, obviously, you would like to continue to retire the areas that need it. So the whole school is, has the same floor.
We addressed a lot of it. It's just the whole thing.
And these are just some of the, these are just some of the floor that you can see that you definitely need replacing. Like I said, some of it's been done over the last two years, but we need to continue. Same thing with students, that furniture. Principal had asked for a larger amount. Capital had to go back and said, okay, let's frame in maybe one regular hold time. So again, she was awarded thirty five thousand last year, and this is just a continuation of the next set of grade levels.
So which grade got replaced last year? I guess it doesn't really matter for security.
Yeah, sure.
I know.
Um, the fitness center. So this is a new one, Fitness Center at the Maryland High School.
We said this last time.
Are we gonna, we do have them on for forty five thousand. We're gonna have to ask every year for the forty five thousand. I thought we were asking for the two hundred.
We were, we're gonna use the fifty thousand out of the of the revolving budget for the first year. And then we're.
So initially, right, initially, I was a director, Tommy, we were gonna fund fifty, fifty five thousand out of the first year.
Yes.
Out of fifty volume fund. He was quite confident that he could fundraise, reach out to boosters, get donations, and have this fitness center pay for within a year. But we were asked to also put it on capital.
Right. But the question is, I, and again, I, I apologize for not catching this, but no, the.
I give, no, I give. So this is for this year is the lease of forty, forty eight thousand dollars. So it's the same with the bus. The bus on here is just all the crumbles. It's, it's just a one year lease payment.
So do we want to put, I, I guess.
Knowing that capital will have to fund.
Next year.
Right. We, we can't not. So if they agree to it, then it's, it's pretty much a given, like we have not ever had the same.
They prefer it that way. Remember, they prefer it on saying, we want things done in a yearly rotation rather than this huge ask upfront. That was their preference.
Just a matter of, we'll have to go back.
I think we approved a large sum.
Fifty five. The two hundred.
Yeah. Yeah. So I think the committee approved the two hundred ask.
I would leave the two hundred ask there.
So you know, so that means just obviously instead of forty, instead of.
Two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll put it this way. I think, I think we've approved a two hundred thousand dollar ask. It's subject to your, your account as far as the, the way that they want it to present. But I, I don't think anyone on the committee wants us to be in a situation next year where we can't ask for something we need because we didn't ask for it this year. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So I don't want, I don't want the, I don't want the forty eight thousand dollars to be again at the top of the budget list because we have no choice, pushing down something else that is going to be a capital thing next year. So I'd rather, I want to make sure it's very clear that this is funded for the, for the life.
And the discussion might indeed make us change the amount.
Right. Right.
We might as well ask for all of it because that is the need.
Capital is gonna, capital is probably, potentially probably, as you said, they were preferring the forty eight thousand dollars for four years versus a two hundred thousand dollar block.
Yeah, how we package it is, is fine. And how our capital wants us to package it is fine, as long as it's known and understood that.
Once we, once they approve it the first year, we have to continue.
For four years. It just needs to be clear. Also, it's fifth grade who has the new desk. So.
Well, is it prepared?
Probably working their way down. Good to know. Yeah.
And just to, just as a quick comment, just FYI, it wouldn't, it's not only used by the school, but it is used by the town officials, the town police officers. So I just want people to know that. You know, we, we encourage them because the five apartment doesn't have any place to work.
Correct.
It's just really small, five community. And they actually have to go out in the parking lot. So this is.
I think about having maybe a fitness center person.
We, we talked about that today.
With the leadership team.
And also having someone here in the line.
So I can take my kid, child there until six. It's better than three.
Sorry. That's good. It's two hours. Well, the gym's always used.
Well, the fitness center.
Right. That means we use, we have, we rent the asphalt, used by our sports.
Right.
Moving on. Moving on.
Um, this isn't new. We've all seen this and we keep wishing and hoping, resurfacing asphalt road from Pond Street. Basic wear and tear with damaged salt and snow plows. We've seen it. We've walked it. It's a mess.
So that, that's, that's to add, add to that space, right? That's to finish it to.
So it's coming up.
This is.
To make the road so it just looks like it's a, you know, developing.
What, what? No, I know, I know why you're asking that because that looks like the picture of two, two, are we gonna extend that?
That's one here as well.
Yeah, okay.
Separate.
So this is, so how much is this ask?
This is eighty.
And that's only gonna cover where?
That's the whole thing.
That's the whole road. That's the road part, like the car part, not the sidewalk part.
Yeah, the, the picture.
Asphalt, please. We need that. Yeah.
The picture is misleading because the picture is actually the picture.
Standing it, saying the sidewalk.
I see the law.
No, no, it's the picture.
It's cement and one's asphalt.
The picture on the bottom left shows you the road going into the bus stop.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, scoreboard, my field scoreboard. Again, it's on the list. It's old, it's outdated, nineteen ninety five. It doesn't, it doesn't provide the features that we need to do.
And you'll have a lovely state of the art turf for spring sports. And we, we made huge progress last couple of weeks.
Um, all the turf is down. Rolled out. They just need a dry day to glue it. And they're, I think today they were putting in, I don't, I don't know what.
We're on, we're back on schedule.
Lines.
Good.
Um, and then we're ready to, almost ready to go. They're gonna go down and then they, they do in line, I think.
Feeling a little better about that. So, but anyway, I digress.
But again, the scoreboard doesn't support across field hockey. It doesn't have the penalties for minutes or the horn. And everything else is new, including the press box.
And this is the asphalt road.
So this is asphalt road in time up from Deer Hill and Osgood. I do not have a picture, so this is a picture of children walking on the road. But basically, we serviced the asphalt road in time one between Deer Hill and Osgood, basically on tear again, damaged salt. Again, it just, it's old. It needs to be resurfaced.
That's at Deer Hill and Osgood.
Here is the extended sidewalk on Pond Street.
So it's similar pictures. It's just a wide, wide lens.
It's a wider lens.
I think we just missed the picture.
So you can see halfway down the, you know, halfway down the sidewalk, it turns to grass.
So you just, it's a dance. Do we know why they did it there?
Undead.
Was it for a grand of money?
I honestly.
Well, I think it was, I think there's some conservation something.
Yeah, because it may, I mean, like, I don't really know.
I honestly don't.
So that, that may be something to look into, because if there's, I mean, it, it may be, not be possible. There's like a wetlands issue or something that, it just seems very weird to have into the sidewalk just so close to another sidewalk.
And then will it line up with the crosswalk when it gets to the end?
I don't know. And again, some of these issues.
Something to think about when we're letting our kids cross the road.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it's a question of. I, I agree with you, Lydia, because I, I'm horrified every day I go pick my kids up, because honestly, they, they jump, they jump out. Because they go from, they go from here and they cross over to go to get some of the seniors, park their cars over at Milliken. No, so you get this big crowd of kids and you're stopping in front of them, letting them go. So if we had a lit up crosswalk in that area, I, I, I would strongly suggest that. I would strongly suggest fixing that. I do think there might be a conservation.
Maybe it's all wet.
So, but I mean, we could still. I, I also wonder, like, again, what, what's the purview of the schools? What's the purview of chief DPW in terms of the, you know? I, you know, I know it's handled differently in different places, but to, to think that it's the school's responsibility to pave the entire asphalt road seems maybe not.
These, these are important questions. I mean, at the end of the day, it all comes down to the same pot, which is the, the town's coffers. But, you know, I, I do think this is where we can work with the town, because, you know, it does mean, it does mean something different. The school, the, the school's asking for it versus something else. You know, there's, there are monies that the tier, that the town earmarks for paving and street maintenance that may be properly applied here. And so maybe what we can do is say, okay, look, we're asking for this, you're giving us, you don't have to spend this forty thousand on streets, so then you give us the extra forty thousand for the, you know, chrome bricks or whatever. But so let's, let's do keep that in mind as a, as, as we talk.
It's a good conversation.
Such a basic level of safety.
Right. And honestly, like, just to bring this up, if we could even put crushed stone down and.
Roll it up.
Yeah, you gotta see, when kids walk by there, especially in the, in the springtime, there's a lot of overgrown plants, like thorns coming out. You see kids like.
Is that about on the path around Lommy Field over to Milliken?
Uh, no, I'm talking about when you walk down to, that's Pond Street. When you, when you straight down there, it's, it is, it's not a clear path either. It's kind of like the kids.
Where there is no sidewalk.
Right.
We want to make it clear that that would be where one is supposed to walk.
Right. And if we could even, if it's conservation, maybe let's crush stone down and make sure that that area is clean so kids aren't gonna get, because you'll see it.
Yeah.
I mean, what do we conserve in there?
There is one.
That's a discussion for a different committee.
So, I mean, I, I mean, shouldn't we just maybe rezone that or something? What, what is there?
Different, different committees. That's a different committee.
Can we get a better picture than that? Because that looks something nineteen eighty four, sixty eight thousand. We just gotta get a new updated picture.
We don't want this particular one.
Yeah.
Colors all off too.
If it doesn't say skippers on the side, I'm not driving.
So this is.
Everything says skipper.
The change you made.
The savings though.
Instead of a hundred thousand for the one, this is for two fifteen passenger vans for athletics, at least for forty eight months. And again, athletic director, every time they had said, with two vans, it will carry all of his teams except for football.
And, and one of the reasons why we didn't have a freshman basketball team this year was because.
And I mean, he, he as well is having a very, very difficult time trying to get his team transported.
That seems like a really low lease amount, about thirty three hundred and thirty three dollars a month, is about what I calculate it at.
Well, because that's what we're leasing.
If releasing that one beige van, that makes sense.
No, I have a quote. I mean, I don't have it with me.
If we've got a quote, let's jump on it. You hear that everyone needs to approve this?
I have it to two thousand and four.
I'm sure Mr. Rotandi thought about this, but I'm just gonna ask, because there's a fifteen passenger van, but then like, does that fit kids and here? Like, it's, it's a lot of bags, you know, it's like, it gets cozy in there. Is that really enough space?
Well, it depends, like.
They have to put their stanky bags in their lap while they're driving. This is what I'm asking.
Support truck.
You know, like, it's their space of defeat. These are tight, those benches. I just think we should fit them like.
Well, maybe we could ask for more for it.
Yeah, maybe, maybe, but I just think like, it needs to be really, you know, like, I just think it's important to ask for
Storage.
what's going to make sense. Not like, oh yeah, we can just squeak this in in the smallest possible way. I'm just thinking of like, every kid in high school is taller than I am.
Follow up with that.
I can follow up with that, but I mean, I just think it's important in like, if we need to ask for more, ask for more.
Well, initially, we was asking for one, but then we, we talked about two because of the price of the lease, and he, he was confident that this would be great for him, because right now he has nothing.
Okay, compared to nothing, right?
Well, you could, the, the JV, not JV team, but a varsity team, eleven kids, they got fifteen, you'd have four extra.
I'm just thinking about like, literally driving in one of those vans, and once you pack people in, there's not as much room for stuff if you're putting all fifteen passengers in. So I just wanna make sure it's a realistic ask or it's enough. That's all.
Absolutely.
Last one.
My stand alone generator for Osgood Facilities has assured us that Osgood has the potential of having, you know, a generator knowing.
Do they not have a generator? Or do they, they now do have a generator?
They do not have a stand alone.
No.
They have portable.
Portables.
And.
That's a lot of money.
Facilities thinks that that's dual with the portable, but it's the only school we have that does that generator. It's probably one of the only town buildings that doesn't have a full generator.
I mean, is there anything other than the food that we're not gonna use the food? Because that's a big ask.
We can wipe this one out if you want. This is the last one on there, and it really is a, we were told by facilities that they can outfit, I think they'd have to switch it on.
They'd have to come down and turn it on.
Yep.
Food service director has assured me that it takes anywhere from twenty four to forty eight hours for the food and food is to buy. So it gives them time to get it down there.
Well, it's an, it's an, it's a, it's a solution that might work, but, but to be honest with you, if that's gonna be used for the school to run to, but just to keep some food, that's a big ask.
It's not just, it's not just.
Okay. But are we gonna be able to have school because we have them?
No, you can't have school without.
So the only, the only thing, look, I'm not about not spending money, it's necessary. However, what I'm saying is that it's just gonna be used to save food at this point.
For what?
Just to save food, like, you'll keep the lights and electricity on, but.
Also, like, food to a school is not something that arrives quickly. I'm just thinking of like the cafeteria where I work, like, there are days we run out of milk. There are days that we ordered chicken and burgers and only got chicken, and so the whole menu has to change. That is not unique to.
Maybe it's just the picture.
This is a.
It, it's quite odd not to have the.
You can't just replace.
I, I get that, but what I'm saying is like, my house would cost about ten grand to, three thousand square foot house, or ten thousand dollars for it. This is a two hundred thousand dollar ass.
That's what the price was, right?
Right, but two, two. One. So, so, well, that's what they have done.
Is that, is it running just the air minimum circuits?
Yes.
Right. So, and, but they, they have a, a solution that they believe will keep the food cold and will suffice during a major storm. So we have that. It's just very rare to have a school that doesn't have a generator, like, like unheard of.
Wait, what's the solution that they think will work?
Well, I don't, I mean.
Portable, yes, portable.
Like the little wheelie guys?
Well, it's big, yeah.
They have to plug it in, they have to go and plug it in and move on. And neither will this.
This one.
Oh yeah, you said this is plug in as well.
No.
This is the stand alone, so when it's like, I'll get off, this will click on.
The picture's not the greatest picture. It's just.
So this is like what you have at your house, and you're spending eight thousand to buy the generator, and then eight thousand to have it connected. So it's sixteen thousand for a house. Speaking for every person in my family who just did this since last year's storm. Yeah, where's, like, I get that this is a bigger school, but.
Oh, we take it off. This, this is an item that is not necessarily, again, it's last, it's dead last, and it's only put on there because it seems odd to not have a generator in a school.
Right.
You should have a generator. Our school should have generators. It's a basic need of a school. I don't look, I don't look at any schools that don't have it. I've never heard of it.
I say much.
Why is it that much more?
Right. I, I agree with Lydia. I, I agree that it should be twenty thousand.
Well, I, I can't name the price. But it's running a whole building.
You know, I don't think it needs to run a whole building if no one's in the building.
I, I'm okay with taking it off, if you're gonna take it off, just you're not getting a generator.
I don't think we want to take it off.
Have you, have you approved this? So, so this has been approved and asked. I think what you're hearing from the committee is of the things you've talked about, this is probably the bottom priority, and if there's a way to look at scoping it down a little bit, given that we aren't going to be able to have school while, while generators being run, so maybe we don't need to run the whole building. We only need to run one, you know, the cafeteria.
Right.
Maybe there's, maybe there is a way to, to scope down the ask, but, but I think the ask is, the ask is what the ask is, and then this, then we, then we go through the part where you talked, talked to the town about it.
But the facilities has presented a solution, scales down.
Does like FEMA subset generators or anything? There's nothing out there. They should all.
I mean, what we do, like I said, the someone's has provided four of those.
Yeah.
I just, I, I think also too, is I just brought up the fact that it, it wouldn't freeze the pipes, because it's not happening now. I mean, like, in other words, it, it would save. So if it's just a refrigerator, to keep the food, that's one thing. But if it's, you know, my house, it's important to do because I have some pumps, and if the electricity goes off, I'm getting water. Also, this is that concern as well. So I would ask to just probably get some questions in there, but.
But keep it on.
Keep it on.
Does it make more sense to get those outdoor walk-in freezers that Marilyn had discussed, like, you know, we talked about these improvements to the, to the food services capabilities?
Yeah.
That may sort of take, I mean, and they're basically, you know, I mean, we're, one of the disadvantages here, we have to move food from Osgood to Deer Hill during outage, so you'd still have to do that, but maybe what we do is just keep the majority of the food in these walk-in freezers, and then you're only storing a certain amount of food in. Like, so like, you know, I don't know, like a few days worth of food in Osgood, and just, you know, more and more used for storage. Basically, you're, you're, what I'm trying to say is, you can cut down the, the food that's stored at Osgood and invest the money in these freezers instead of this generator. You're saying that it's odd not to have a generator at a school. I don't necessarily disagree with you, but to Paul's point, what value is it actually adding beyond the foods, the food that's keeping the food from spoiling? Maybe, and, and where we, where we think that we want, what we need, going to improve the food service offering, these walk-in freezers outside of, outside of Deer Hill. Well, I don't know, maybe we just reallocate the money to that.
I mean, I think facilities quite honestly views this ask as more of a luxury ask than a necessity, and, you know.
I mean, and.
I'm not, I'm not an expert in generators.
The portables.
I mean, I do defer to them.
The food.
They, they will keep the portals, the portals. And after you hook down, you can keep the freezers frozen.
As they say.
Well, keep it on list. Maybe we'll need some extra money.
That's why I'm, you know, like, I know, I know we've already approved it, but it is, it is the lowest priority on this, because I don't think we're gonna get that. And I also think that they have a viable argument against getting it, although I still think it's very odd to have a generator in a school.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we'll back, see if we can get one. Like, I would stop short of saying the line. Maybe it's the picture, man. That thing looks expensive. So when I look at that and I look at a fitness center, I'm like, what?
They're different line items.
We can work on.
Yeah.
All right. So.
The photographer's not so good.
Oh, we have the, we have.
Maybe some different stuff.
That's it. All right. I think we covered questions. Any additional questions? I don't think we have public comment. Why don't we outline the next steps, where we go from here?
Okay, the calendar I have here.
The meeting on the eighteenth.
So I can, I was gonna show it on screen. So we have.
The line item budget.
On the eighteenth, we have the FY twenty four line item budget presentation school committee. Do you want to explain what that is, sir?
It's just the actual account line by line, where the one sits. Big document, but basically it shows all our account numbers. A line item.
We have yet another discussion, although not a full presentation necessarily, about budget at the February first meeting, that, remember, February first meeting will be.
Going to Metco headquarters.
First is in Union Square. That's exciting. February sixth, we publish, that's not a school committee meeting, but we publish a notice of upcoming public hearing in local newspapers. February fifteenth, the school committee discusses the budget again. And then we, we are scheduled at some point between the fifteenth and March first to have a joint meeting of school committee selectmen and advisory committee.
See like first in there, or is it?
What's that? I'm sorry.
On and around March first, or is that the date?
Sometimes, so March first is when we have the public hearing.
Okay.
So, so we have to have, according to this calendar, some sort of joint meeting of the school committee selectmen and select persons of the advisory committee between the fifteenth and the first. And then on the first, we've already advertised for this, this is our public hearing. And then on the fifteenth, you would vote the final adoption of the budget and certify the budget figure. And then in May, we go to town meeting with it. And then June, the final account line budgets are sent to those.
So we don't necessarily have to have a question discussion at every one of those meetings, but I felt like last year and the year before that, I didn't think, I didn't feel we had enough meetings for the budget.
It gives us some time, gives us some room to talk if we wanna talk.
Yeah, and, and it's good because we want this budget to evolve as we learn more about needs and capabilities and what's available to us. So I'm frankly happy to have this detailed discussion, and we have other slaves on the agenda.
Great. So that is, that's where we stand, right? Anything else on to budget? One, one thing that I would ask is, again, like, this is what concerns me, is that we had a study, spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on company in the committee tells what we need, and we don't have one tenth of what we need. But I mean, we do have things that we do need, but there's so many other things that are involved in that. And I just don't think that, that we're asking for enough stuff. Maybe it's next year.
So, I'm sorry, didn't try. I, I do have a meeting next week with Michelle Larry, administrator to the fiscal time district, over our ten year plan. And I think we're gonna invite Nick, and we're gonna go over that study from AI to AI three security company.
Yeah.
And try to take that twelve million and bid it into the ten year plan.
Okay, that's great.
Fit it in where we think it should go. And so you'll at some point see that, but we're gonna be next week.
No, so, but then I was, so we have another second meeting, like Jason was, we talked about that. I mean, that school, the town is.
Scopes.
Scope is. Yes. So we're gonna invite him into our next, one of our next meetings.
Okay.
And then we can update this. I think we have a meeting soon.
I just wouldn't have your report, so I was just waiting.
Yeah, we, we do, we do have that, so we're gonna close off our proposed budget. We did already cover transportation in the, in the discussion, a little bit on food service.
I have an update, quick update you might like about food services.
You have to see.
Oh, I saw that. So our new equipment, our new equipment came, and it's, it's in, it's wonderful.
The actual room.
It's the actual room.
No, that's the main room.
That's the main.
Yeah, we're gonna, I'm gonna go through these, but this is, you know, you can see the, 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 all of this new equipment, and the equipment that was there previously, you wanna talk about the plan for that?
Sure. So the plan for the equipment that was there initially, some of the elementary schools, well, I should say so. The elementary schools are looking at what, what of that equipment they could bring to their own kitchens to expand. So we're not just getting rid of it. We're gonna, we're gonna send it over to elementary.
So this is the main serving area. All of this equipment's new.
And you can see over the serving, you can see the cohesive emblem that's on it, which we didn't have. And then if you look at the, there's, there's black signs up above with the lights. So there's gonna be decals there that say hot meal, deli. We just haven't got to that point yet.
This is brand new. It just came.
And then the salad bar is off to the left, which at some point, it's gonna, it could possibly be right in the middle, aligning with this food area. Um, and then the salad bar is off to the left, which, um, at some point, it's gonna, it, it could possibly be right in the middle, aligning with this group area. Um, but we're waiting for sneeze gods, so, um, she's not comfortable putting it out there. And she thought at least a week or two after, coming back from break, she probably might have everyone.
Sure.
Sticking their hands in the salad bar.
Yeah, so then, and then we have a snack area.
The snack area, which I heard is a big hit with the students.
Yeah, so you look at, that's that space that we looked at, um, Mr. McClellan, Mr. Kennedy, remember that? Sorry, this, it looks awesome. I would say this, though, a couple of things. We do have to look at the snacks on the twenty-fifth, what exactly that is. And then I'm starting, if you look on the other side of that door, where you put the sign that says snack, um, go back to the next one.
Oh, you know, back, I'm sorry. Forward, oh, I was gonna say.
Right there. Um, okay, then maybe that's not the sink. That's on the door. But then, when I saw it was on the building, that'd be a great spot that we could put another TV on to kind of.
On the door?
Not on the door.
Not on the wall.
On the wall, there's a, there's a plug there too. So if we put a, instead, then you can put what the hours are. You can make it look a little bit like a pressure.
Yeah.
I'm talking about the onside, if you walk through that door, on the right-hand side of that wall.
Right.
It could be a TV right there, a screen, maybe a thirty-eight inch.
And so she's got this open now, it's set on that sign, um, it's open during the breaks too, so kids can go in there at any time and get something.
That's huge. My kids were excited about it, so, yeah. Just a close-up of, uh, of what we're talking about here.
It's beautiful.
Yeah. Yeah. And then, then this is just a close. Watching basketball games.
Ms. Owen, did you see this, this thing, this has been rolled out, the snack area?
Yes.
Yeah.
Did you see this during lunch hours?
Yes.
I have lots of.
Does it assist with the traffic flow issue? Yeah, does it like completely like rectify that issue with their, no longer log jam?
The middle school, yes, absolutely. It, it's desolate because they're split between the two. The high school, they have to one lunch, um, it wasn't as congested as before. Because a lot of the kids are going right to the snack room.
That's the salad bar, you gotta, you gotta see, it will be outfitted. Anyway, that, that's it. I just wanted to give you a sense of. Progress.
Yeah, I was really impressed. I'll show you those pictures.
Fantastic.
They have, okay. But it's, oh, it will be.
All right, so I can only do, um, new reports from school committees. Uh, we're working away. On policy.
That's here.
Or school facilities, that will be on January tenth, discuss an NSDA response. Uh, how we're moving forward from that. And a report from Food Service Nutrition Subcommittee is that our last meeting at Deer Hill, we were exploring improvements could be made to that facility as to improve the overall elementary offerings. And the Director of Food Services, Marilyn Herden, was going to get back to us on a sort of wish list of equipment, and also, as proposed, proposed, uh, sort of rough plan of how we might utilize the now custodial spaces behind the, the primary of the Deer Hill cafeteria. If that was, if the custodian staff, custodial staff was to be moved to a different area, how we might utilize that repurpose it for services as to enhance our potential offerings for elementary school lunches. So we will be waiting on that. I can reach out to Sarah, because I have not heard from her yet, I'm sure because she's been busy, but, um, I'll have an update for you, and Paula, I'll have an update for you about that.
I don't know, like a salad bar, Jerry?
It could be a lot, so.
I was curious, just feel like, I had a salad bar when I was at Deer Hill.
Well, I'll.
Your bacon bits.
Um, yes, the short answer, yes.
Yeah, good.
The other thing too is we, we spoke about maybe hiring a chef as well.
Yes, I think that, that.
Sorry, I don't want to extend that conversation.
No, it's, it's fine. Yeah, the, the chef, yes, the chef, I think is something that we have the money hardly for, that I think everyone agrees that we're, we're probably gonna try and deploy that staff member for the upcoming school year, see if we can develop some more robust menu offerings. But these are just, these are all sort of still in the gestational planning phase. Wanted to color it. That's it.
All right. Um, now it blows off community relations, we want to school committee governance. There is one topic that is not reasonably anticipated by the chair within the forty-eight hours.
Yes.
And that is a gift, I guess, Dr. Sullivan, can you, uh?
We do, we have a gift, um, offered to us generously from CertaPro Painters of the South Shore. And they're located at one thirty-seven Wayman Street in Rockland, Massachusetts, and they are donating, if accepted, one thousand five hundred dollars to Cohasset High School. And this is for, uh, senior high school lawn signs, this is the lawn signs that will go, um, on the con to continue that tradition that we started then.
Thank you very much, CertaPro. Any comments, questions from the committee?
Do we have any, or has originated?
I don't.
They just randomly wanted to give us money?
Uh, I don't know.
Someone has, so, so I think Kim Foyle was, uh, at the helm of it last year. We've been doing it for, I think, two or three years now.
Yeah.
She must have passed the torch to someone that then went to find some source, some funding for it, I imagine. But I just, I'm curious, I said, who did that? It must be an upcoming graduating parent that's looking to do this.
I, I can research that, find out. I actually was made aware of this today.
Yeah, let's just give it.
Yeah, that's why it's, I'm, I'm just. But I, I don't.
I didn't see it going at all, so.
And I didn't have a chance to delve back and ask Principal Scott either, so.
No, please. All right.
Great, so, well, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the receipt of the gift.
No move.
A second?
Second.
All right, second, may I say, knowledge? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries with unanimous of those present, four committee members. Thank you very much, CertaPro, for your support of the schools and for the senior lawn, high lawn signs. Um, with that, we have no minutes. Do we have any specific requests for future agenda items?
Yes. Uh, I, I do still, I still would like to talk about the sick policy, sick child policy, that the twenty-four hour without a fever, where they can't return. I want to figure out the origin to the genesis of that is, whether it's something I still want to do, or we can.
We'll take it on the policy sub.
Great, policy subcommittee also looking to creating, um, uh, policy similar to the one that exists relative to Cohasset public school staff or county Cohasset staff, um, in terms of allowing, uh, folks that work for the town of Cohasset, but don't necessarily live in the town of Cohasset to decide whether or not they would like to have their children, the children attend private public schools, it could be a nice benefit for town employees. And I don't think it'd, yeah, it'd be a huge burden on the system, but it would, I think it would be a really nice benefit to try and attract, entertain some valuable assets to manage our, and administer our town like we do with our teaching staff. Our school staff, which is, I'm sorry, teachers. Staff that works in schools. Excellent, those are the two things I'd like the policy subcommittee to think about, because I think that, I think it's a policy, the school policy, where, where's that?
It's a school name policy. And it's, but it's also something that is negotiated in the teacher's contract.
Sure.
So, so obviously this would be.
It's be an expansion of that, but it wouldn't be in the, wouldn't be negotiated by the CTA.
Correct.
Uh, just be an expansion of our policy to, uh, for town employees as well.
Good idea. We'll take that. Any other future agenda items?
There's a question that came in. A moment ago, okay. So, um, it's, um, Megan Risky, maybe you could give us your address if I don't have it here. She's in sync. So two questions regarding the budget. Has the committee considered adding microphones and speakers to each classroom, especially in elementary schools? Research, research shows there is an increase in performance and improved behavior. And two, what is the percent of students riding the bus who pay for the bus? What is the percent that they are contributing to the bus fund currently? There is a lot of being asked for buses while the transportation is extremely.
So first, we, we, we can.
Yeah.
The first one, um, absolutely, it would be the committee considering adding microphones and speakers to each classroom. It's actually operational, that's something that we've looked into and have offered that to, to everyone.
They're in some classrooms. In some classrooms.
Yeah.
With the elementary, and then there are.
We haven't required it of teachers, but we, we absolutely advocated for it during our return. Uh, it was, I'm, I'm a huge fan of this. It's, it's a great resource for, uh, teachers and students for a variety of reasons, to make sure that they can hear. But during a situation where we had mandatory masking, we found that it was a very effective instructional tool. So we absolutely advocated for and provided microphones for anyone who wanted them, um, without making it a requirement to use one. So there's absolutely, uh, there's absolutely, speakers are a little different at, at times, but if you have a microphone, a small speaker, you could have a, a, a system that is more comprehensive.
All right.
But we have a microphone and speaker system available for any student.
Are they just available or are they installed in every classroom? Like the little, uh, structure thing that goes around during? Yeah, those are, those are what.
So does the FM system, the system, the tiny, and we're, we're often viewed for, uh, anyone who might be hearing impaired. Also fantastic for, for the use of, of projecting your voice. I can't speak to exactly what it is, but I can find the information.
Yeah, I just think like the FM systems are extremely beneficial, and I, in most schools where I've worked, have been in every classroom across the board. And some, you know, some students have partial hearing loss or whatever in, in certain ears, and then some children opt out of listening at times, and, um, it's really nice to have everything in plan, especially when kids want to participate or when volunteers come in. It's, I feel like that.
Completely.
Just should, right, yeah, I mean, this isn't like a controversial topic, but it just, I feel like instead of saying, oh, it's an option, it should just be in every realm.
So, and, okay, well, I appreciate that perspective.
And so, and I, I do want to keep.
We'd have to negotiate that.
Comments about.
Teachers to make sure that they were never made aware.
So I, I'm interpreting the questions in terms of the budget, which is what we're, so, and so it's not on the budget, and it's something operationally you've looked at, so that's.
Oh, yeah, and advocated for, for sure.
So, so thank you. And then the question two, I don't know if I even have the numbers on the percentage of people who pay for the bus and what percentage of the cost of that offsets.
I do not have an exact number. I know approximately fifty percent of us students ride a bus. And it's probably almost a fifty-fifty, maybe a sixty-forty split of who pays.
I, I, you know, that is a, that is a factor in considering how many buses we need on the roads.
Right.
Which is a factor in how many drivers we need to, uh, to transport students. Uh, and I want to be, we want to be able to provide, uh, the service for people who pay, and they're paying, and they should get the service. But it is, it is a factor that, uh, it is, is in the calculus here.
When you say it is a factor, do you mean the numbers of people who pay are?
So if we only, again, we're only required to transport students grades K through six or within a semi-radius of the school. Outside of school, as the crow flies, basically. And, um, but like other districts do, we offer it for students, uh, who are outside of that, um, for a price. If we just, if we just did what we're required to do and didn't offer that, we would have a need for less buses, which would mean we'd have less drivers, and that would be a, a way we could function. We don't want to do that. It's not what we want to provide the community, it's not what the community deserves, but it is a fact.
It, it would be a hard jump off an idea.
Yeah, well, yeah, there'd be all sorts of things, I guess.
Well, we went through, we actually, it wouldn't be any worse than what we went through during, it was everybody, but having said that.
But I, I, one of the interesting things is, um, and I've not thought about the, the, what, how much of this is self-financing? So if, if, as, for example, you mentioned that half our kids are on the bus. If we had more efficient bus systems, would more people be willing to pay for the bus and so on and so forth? How much of that is, I don't know, but it's a, it's a, it's an interesting question. Thank you for, for raising it. I think we can come back with, with firmer numbers.
Uh, good, good questions, so. Great. The other thing is, is as far as, I'm good with that?
We are good with that. I was just going to, uh, run next to.
We're still asking for a future agenda.
Yes.
I just, the other thing that I've been bringing up for a while now to us is the revolving accounts. We have one point two million dollars in accounts that have been, we, you know, they've asked to make sure that they're earmarked to see exactly why, you know, like, the school committee has thirty thousand dollars in our account, what are we doing with it? Why is it there? Is it earmarked for something? And if not, like, we should be designing where the money should go, it should go. If not, we should have a discussion of how we should use those funds, because again, that's one, you know, you know, it's sitting there and, you know, I go there and I see this.
Might I ask that, uh, as a subcommittee?
Yeah, that's why I'm saying, maybe we need to.
Review of revolving. Bring on to.
And status of revolving.
I think it's, I think it's a valuable.
Okay, let's, that's all.
And then we'll come back and look at it.
Very good. Well, you want to look at full committee, you want to.
Subcommittee first.
And then we go forward, okay. I'd like to get that done.
Good time to look at it, actually.
Yeah, okay.
And she's talking about.
Okay, yeah, no, I just bring, I.
Cause I just.
Keeps bringing it up. So a lot much time in that space.
Um, there is no reason to go into executive session, uh, so with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, so.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, the meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for those watching at home, and we'll see you in a couple weeks.
Thank you.